You got your coffee ready? It's cold out there, I know. Pretty interesting meeting yesterday. We heard the report from Noah, so talk a bit about the budget's one thing I want to talk about. Where you guys are at budget wise and you know how things are going?
Well, as the preliminary budget's been published, it's in the 30 day review period and Tony, Dan and I will be voting on the budget the 18th, right?
With no tax increase.
That's the big question.
Yeah.
Now, to do that, did you have to make any cuts or increase any fees?
That's the budget workshop. That's what we do.
Right.
You know, you have to take from here and add here until you get a finalized budget. Corey Trautman, our financial administrator is phenomenal. He tells us, you know, this is what we have. This is where we're at. This is what you can do. This is what you can't do. And eventually we put a tentative package together and that's what we voted on last meeting in November. And unless there's any changes, that's probably what we're going to be voting for on the 18th.
On behalf of taxpayers, thank you for not raising taxes. I know that can't be tough and.
Well, you could make a case that with the reassessment that we did, we did not, it wasn't revenue neutral. We ended up operating at a deficit. You know, we set that 3.67 based on the reassessed total value at the time of reassessment and we were kind of on a deadline. We had to set that number. The following year and into this year, with all the appeals, the total assessed value has come down. And therefore the revenue projected has not been neutral. We've been operating at a deficit. So we could have made a case to make a small adjustment. I probably would have supported that quite frankly. Because if we don't, then it's only going to compound as we go forward. But there are other ways that we can compensate for that deficit in regular property tax revenue for operating type by not doing any, by flat funding some of our subsidies. The only ones that really had increases were contractual ones. We had what? How many contracts renegotiated with the nine unions?
Nine total.
That we have, at least five of them and they'll have, you know, salary increases in there. So we had to adjust salaries due to those contractual issues.
A budget's nothing more than a plan of spending. It's a plan of income and a plan of what should be called revenues and expenditures. And it fluctuates and we monitor and adjust it whenever we have to.
I mean, Maria is correct in that it's not sustainable to continue to draw down reserves to make up that deficit. So over the next, you know, three years or so, we're going to have to make some, some hard decisions. Right now, the one of the ones we have is not creating any new positions and closely examining any vacancies when they go to be refilled. So you do, you do control your budget by controlling your headcount. Well, I will say this, that a lot of the jobs that were created, a lot of jobs that we're looking at aren't paid out of our operating budget. They aren't core county employees. They're working with flow through money from the federal government to the state. I mean, community development is 100% funded, those salaries by HUD. It's administrative costs they pay. That's what pays all of those salaries of all those folks in community development. 80% for behavioral health and some of the office of aging are anywhere from 80 to 100% funded by state or federal money. So it's a little bit different. I mean, if I was running my own business and I'm looking at my headcount, but somebody says, hey, I'm going to pay the salary. Sure. You want to hire us? Go ahead. You're going to pay for it. Bring them on board. If we can expand our services, deliver better services, be able to do more things, better projects, be better servants of the residents, I'll take that any day.
I think of the three levels of government, we're the best as far as managing taxpayers' dollars and doing what we have to do. But it's not necessarily directly like a business though. You know, we have issues we have to deal with. You know, we deal with senior citizens. We deal with the children and youth. We deal with the office that he aged. And as Jack alluded to, that's, those are pass through monies, which is the biggest part of our budget.
Absolutely.
It's the biggest part. Right. And people don't understand that. My job is to provide services to the people of Beaver County and so is Jack and so is Dan's. And that's what we do. We do it very well. You know, again, we disagree, but we don't publicize our disagreements. We do what's best for Beaver County.
With the proposed budget, are there any changes to current staffing?
No.
No.
No, I mean, there are some vacant positions. Some that have been vacant for a long time and they'll probably be taken off the books and have to go through a different, more rigorous process to fill going forward. I mean, not everybody got what they wanted when they came to us with their wish list of things. I mean, there were millions of dollars of capital for other projects or different things and we're always going to take a look at.
There he is.
I mean, ever since I've moved here, people have been complaining about the size of the sheriff's department, the cost of the sheriff's department, how expensive the detectives are and stuff. I mean, it's just, it's a reality when it comes to public health and safety.
Until you need a sheriff. Until you need one in court.
And you understand the depth and the expanded duties and responsibilities that folks have had. You understand why there's some of that growth and how difficult it is. We know how difficult it is for municipalities to find municipal police officers. So kind of the cost of entry into those kinds of jobs goes up and it's tough to find part-time help. So you have to turn more towards full-time help to fill those hours. Full-time help's more expensive than part-time help. But it's also a juggling act with trying to schedule all those people to do all those things. But we can talk about, you know, slowing down the purchases of cars and leases and those kinds of things. But, but that's just trimming some stuff around, around the edges. At the end of the day, it still comes back to the people and how many people you have and stuff. And that's the same principle in businesses as it is in government. You have to control your headcount.
When I started 18 years ago, we had 1,580 some employees or half that.
That included Friendship Bridge, right?
Right, exactly. I mean, Beaver County government's really downsized.
And those of us, I know like me, that believe in a small federal government means that there's more impact at the local level where you have more control and more input, but that also puts more pressure on us to do more things. And we see what's happening at the federal level. I'm concerned about some of the funding or lack of funding and the cuts of funding that are coming into programs that we have that are safety net programs for the homeless and abused women and all kinds of behavioral health things and addiction issues that still exist there. We rely on those funds and if those are cut, that's going to strain our system at the local level. As Tony said, this is where the rubber hits the road here at the county government level. So it's challenging. I mean, every day is a, Tony likes to say, a new adventure on what pops up on our radar screen.
For our listeners, Dan Camp joined us as well. We have the three commissioners. We're talking about the budget, of course, the proposed budget and everything. And I saw Allegheny County, they're, they likewise did not raise taxes or cut any jaws, but they made some extra revenue. They're going to increase fees for things like ice skating rinks or swimming pools and things like that. Is that something you guys are looking at? Any kind of raises or increases in recreation or anything?
We don't have that many fees to begin with, quite frankly. It's very, very little revenue from any of the fees. Even dog license, people can get dog licenses from all over the place.
The courts have a tendency to raise some of the fees and we get some of that money.
Filing fees and those kinds of things, but you know, not much on our end.
So you're talking about safety now. With the proposed budget, will taxpayers notice any change? Will they, does it affect anything like bus routes or?
I would hope not.
Anything that?
No, I would hope not. I mean, we've expanded services. BCTA is actually rolling out a great new program.
Three new.
To expand the routes and people's point-to-point access for things. They're doing a great job. And again, that's flow through money that comes that we end up giving BCTA through Harrisburg.
Okay. We have a phone call we're going to go to right now. You are on Ask the Commissioners. Hello there.
Good morning, gentlemen. I got a question and then I'll hang up and listen to your answer. You may have already answered this. I have a question about Wildwood Road there in Brighton Township. What is the status on that? And also is that a state or a county road? Thank you.
That's a Pendott Road and I have issues with Wildwood as well because I have to detour coming from Chippewa into the courthouse. I know Garen Fidelas, our solicitor, has reached out repeatedly to Pendott and to Josh Cale, Representative Cale, on that. My understanding is they were waiting for the hill to stabilize. I believe that's happened. The last I heard was it's now on a list to be considered to be repaired, but I really don't have any more information. Then it's on the list to be repaired versus being on the list that Penns is not even looking at like an acre town.
There is the question of funding. We have so many roads that have subsided and they're all state roads. It's just, they don't have the funding.
That is a main therapy there. Someone who formerly lived on that.
It is. A part of our point is for medic rescue and the people access to the hospital. It, you know, it's a longer detour to get around in emergency situations and those kinds of things. But it is a pretty heavily traveled cut through from Beaver down to 51 to 18 and out to Beaver.
So along with the budget for the, we were at the end of the year, of course, are there any other major issues you guys are sorting through or any other votes that will, you know, affect people? Or what will your next meeting be like?
Every day is a new adventure. Every day.
Yeah, I don't think there's any votes that are going to affect you. I'm sure Commissioner Manning, Commissioner Madeo said, you know, when we passed the budget on the 17th of December.
18th.
18th of December, I'm sorry, 18th of December, that, you know, there won't be a tax increase to the residents of Beaver County. And, you know, it's important that they understand that yes, there, this shows a deficit. But of course it shows a deficit because we have cost of living. You know, we have nine collective bargaining agreements. Those raises increase, just like your healthcare at home increases, that increases. But we made good steps to make sure that we keep those at a doable cost. You know, we recently switched our healthcare to Highmark from UPMC, not because of the hospital up here on the hill, but just because we were able to get better rates. Our employees are able to get better service, meaning that they could still go to UPMC hospitals. They could still go to Highmark, AGH hospitals. So it's important that we offer that to them, but we're also saving money, not only for our county budget, but for the residents who pay taxes. Cause ultimately they pay our wages and our fringe benefits. But you know, it's important that our residents do know that we're working hard. Our department heads are working hard. Yes, there are some minimal things that we're going to work with the controller on to, you know, make sure that we say, hey, you know, you can't be tipping more than 15% or whatever our travel policy says. But you know, at the end of the day, it's up to our department head. So we're going to work on that with her. We're going to work on that with our department heads.
That's some tightening up we want to do. We still have the parking garage to finish up. It should be open hopefully within a week here.
Yes.
End of this week and stuff. But this work, they're going to have to come back in the spring and finish up with some sealing and some other stuff that they have to do. And you know, there's a handful of projects that we're working on right now. I mean, most of the, the end of the year, when it gets to this point, you get past the budget, there's some appointments, end of the year appointments and reorganization and those kinds of things we'll do. But more just functional.
Scott, when that's doing absolutely nothing, the budget's going to go up 3%. So, and you know, 3% a year with cumulative cash flow adds up quickly, quickly.
How about as far as development? We always like to talk about that as well. And that's of course, one way to get new tax revenue and anything.
Still a lot going on. You know, the Bruce Mansfield site seems to be moving forward. There's a lot of stuff behind the scenes, working with municipalities, not by us, but by the, you know, the developers and stuff. So that looks like that's going forward. Still a lot of interest up and down the Ohio for some different things. And we're still seeing a bunch of new stores and businesses continue to open up.
And more importantly is residential development. That shows that people are moving into the county. And I think it's so important that we continue to develop residential developments.
The setup in Big Beaver where the racetrack is recently closed, anything new there? You know, there's a petition drive to try to save it. I don't know how.
My mileage base is the same since it happened. I absolutely know nothing about who bought it.
It's private property.
What their intent is. Everything's speculation on our part.
We've got at least 150 emails on it or more. And there's absolutely nothing we can do. It's private property.
Yeah. As they said, you know, I reached out to council and the mayor, I'm sure they have as well. And at the end of the day, there's been nothing filed at the courthouse. There's been nothing filed, any permitting filed at Big Beaver Borough. Whether they know or not, they're not telling us, but at this time, you know, as a board, we do not know who is looking to purchase that, what they're looking to do there. So.
And probably once we do, we'll have to sign a memorandum and not be able to disclose it anyway until the transactions are done.
Yeah. And you know, I feel, first of all, it is a great loss. Pitt Race was a tremendous asset for the community here locally. Brought in a lot of tourism dollars and it was just a great venue. And the Stout family has been terrific, great community partners. But you know, the same thing there and people always feel bad when they hear farms being sold for a developer. Well, I mean, if your life is in this acreage and this stuff and somebody and you're, you're reaching your seventies and eighties and you're looking at the rest of your life and somebody's offering you millions of dollars for your property. I can't blame somebody for saying, okay, you know, I can't do this forever. I have nobody to hand this farm off to or I have nobody to hand this, you know, venue off to. I mean, what are you going to do when you're faced with those options?
We have a big farmland preservation program and we monitor that and we watch it because you got to eat. People don't understand that. You have to have farms. But we're trying to manage it. It's difficult at times.
Talk about tourism dollars. I know I've been talking about, there's a TV series that's been filming in Beaver for the past three weeks. And they also filmed the new Brighton and out at the Tri-County Soccer Rink in Cranmore. Do you ever see dollars from that? When they're a TV show or movies filming here, does that translate to any?
So we see, we see a little, they filmed twice at the courthouse and they have made contributions to, I guess it would just be our general fund. Now, I think what we're starting to see is they're coming to Beaver County more. Their producers are very friendly. They, they like our communities. They like our residents. They like our councils because we're very accommodating to them. So I think they're starting to use our, just like Sheldon, when they came here, they used our businesses more for catering, for lunch, for Starbucks, whatever it may be. Cafe Colochi, you're seeing these, you know, at the courthouse, they had 100 people there working, you know?
It was amazing.
It was a lot of people for a 30 second clip. They were there all day. Today they're in downtown Beaver on Third. They're going to be shutting Third down for probably only when they shoot. I think that was, they thought Third was shut down all day today. Eric Brewer from 911 said it's only going to be a partial shutdown when they actually shoot. So you know, we see a little bit financially through the county, but I think what we see is more downstream and they're starting to use our businesses more for food and, you know, accommodations.
They're actually filming in Beaver Super.
And one thing is, you know, after talking to their producers is these are all local, whether they're Beaver County or southwestern Pennsylvania, other than the lead actors and actresses in the show. They're all Pittsburgh, Allegheny, Beaver County residents.
Even the Teamsters.
The Teamsters who are moving this show forward.
They filmed at the Health Hut in Beaver. They turned it into a pharmacy. I drove by South, South, what was it? Salk's Pharmacy was on the window there. They filmed one day in there and stuff. I think those film folks, the ones that scout out, I think they like Beaver County for the reasons we like Beaver County. The diversity of things that you can see. And I mean, from old historic places to a classic downtown looking like Beaver to some different homes in Rochester's or VFWs and different stuff. There's a lot of unique venues that they can come when they scout those things out for different scenes.
Somebody got some drone footage of New Brighton and downtown Beaver and that's been in at least a dozen Hallmark movies and up TV movies.
That is something that Rhino Productions put out on the internet that you can sell that stuff out there. I've seen that aerial clip of downtown Beaver in a dozen different Hallmark movie things and stuff where they want a shot of a classic downtown.
That's a source of pride though, that we represent such a quaint look, you know? We were here with Ask the Commissioners. We have to go to Commercial Bank. We back more with the Commissioners. You have a question? Give us a call. 724-843-1888.
Nobody should be lonely, especially around the holidays. This is Cindy Haladio from Friendly Federal Credit Union.
Not again. Come on, Cindy. It's time to let somebody else do the talking, especially for this commercial. This is Kevin Cheek. It is true. Seeing a smiling, friendly face like mine, especially at the teller window, can brighten anyone's day. Cheer up. There is no need to do things alone or be by yourself this holiday or anytime. Come celebrate the value and service, not to mention live in-person tellers at Friendly Federal Credit Union.
Don't be lonely this time of the year. Enjoy old fashioned, in-person transactions at Friendly Federal Credit Union. You can also click FriendlyFCU.org. Happy holidays from Friendly Federal Credit Union. Member NCUA, equal housing lender.
It's that time of year again. Happy Honda days. So don't wait. Hurry into your local Honda dealer where you could find clearance deals on a 2025 Accord, a 2025 Pilot or a 2025 Ridgeline. Hurry into your local Honda dealer and experience the wonder of happy Honda days while the clearance deals last. Don't miss out. Visit Moon Township Honda during happy Honda days or online at MoonHonda.com. See dealer for financing details.
Get ready for the ninth annual Holly Jolly Christmas concert, December 6th at Hopeall High School. An all-star lineup including Bailey Taylor and the Holly Jolly Band with Joe Monroe, Danny Gotchnauer, Hermy Granati and more will perform Christmas songs. The Holly Jolly horn section and Hopeall High School Drumline and chorus will entertain too. Tickets cost $20 for adults, $5 for children six and older, available at the BF Jones Library, the Medicine Shop, Friendly Federal Credit Union and at the door. Proceeds benefit Hopeall Schools music programs and the BF Jones Library. Come out and get jolly, December 6th.
Step through the gates of Beaver County's sweetest castle, where chocolate is handcrafted and enchantment fills the air. At Rosalind Candy Castle, our family has been creating the most delicious confections since 1914. Rich caramels fit for royalty, velvet buttery creams that taste like magic and our legendary chocolate covered pretzels beloved across the land. Visit Rosalind Candy Castle in New Brighton or order from afar at Rosalind'sCandy.com. Rosalind's Candy Castle, where every taste is a royal delight and every visit feels like a fairy tale.
Join us at Rosalind's Candy Castle's open house. That's Sunday, December 7th from 11 until 5 p.m. Santa and Mrs. Claus will be visiting from 11 a.m. until 1 p.m. Bring the whole family. Enjoy special discounts on their family assortment, exciting raffle prizes and mouthwatering samples. Rosalind's Candy Castle in New Brighton.
Coming at you from the Frye Transportation Group Studios, 9:27 on this Thursday morning. It's Ask the Commissioners where we take phone calls and find out what's going on county government wise. We have another phone call right now. If you guys want to grab your headphones, we'll put you on. Hello. Thanks for joining us. Hello.
Good, good morning. My name is Joel Dixon. I'm living in Freedom, PA. And I'd like to get an update on what's happening with Sheriff Guy's agreement, the 287G agreement with ICE.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Mr. Dixon does attend our meetings and it's nice to see that residents, especially all the way from that part of the county are willing to come down to Beaver to attend those meetings. Again, Mr. Dixon, we are still at a standstill. We haven't heard from the sheriff yet. For this to be passed, it would have to go through a resolution request through the law department. I actually just checked with the law department earlier this week and there hasn't been one. So at this time, you know, the sheriff has signed the agreement on his behalf. The county has not signed it and at this time it's not going to be put onto our agenda because there's been no resolution request. I don't know if he's still on the.
Yeah, it's kind of, kind of a moot point at this juncture. So.
Well, thank you for your response. I appreciate that.
And as always, Mr. Dixon, if for something that would come up for the 287G, Nicole in our office, our chief clerk would reach out to you and your group as well. So you have knowledge of that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your call.
Take care.
We have Noah Haswell ending with now.
Beaver County Radio's news source, 99.3 FM, 1230 WBVP and BeaverCountyRadio.com. Here's Noah Haswell.
Good morning. On this Thursday, December the 4th of 2025, we will have a complete Beaver County radio weather forecast after we take this look at news. According to a release in Carnegie yesterday from Congressman Chris Deluzio's office, Deluzio announced yesterday that 14 Western Pennsylvania fire departments are receiving more than $2.8 million in federal grant funding to support their public safety missions. This followed some outreach from the Office of Deluzio to bring home grants like these back to the 17th Congressional District of Pennsylvania. The Federal Emergency Management Agency via the Department of Homeland Security's fiscal year 2024 assistance to firefighters and staffing for adequate fire emergency response grant programs was where the funding was provided through. The main topic discussed at the Beaver County Commissioners' work session yesterday morning at 10 a.m. at the Beaver County Courthouse in Beaver was when Beaver County Controller Maria Longo reinforced the issue of increased and excessive spending as well as spending on items that were unacceptable in Beaver County during the department head report of the session.
As of this day, revenues are at 72.1 million with a 66% budget. And expenses are at 81.2 million, 75% of budget, for a deficit of $9.1 million. And these numbers don't include payroll that just posted today, which adds another $2 million, which puts us 11 million behind for 2025. Without the ARK of Interest, which we're done with, the general fund revenue is 82 million. So I estimate only 10 more million revenue for the general fund. We are already past that with expenses in 2025 if not for it yet.
People's Natural Gas is encouraging their customers in Pennsylvania to apply now for the Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program, RELI HEAP, which is a federally funded program that provides cash grants ranging from $2,000 or $200, excuse me, to $1,000 that are one-time to help eligible low-income households pay their heating bills. More information and a website to apply for this program can be found on our website at BeaverCountyRadio.com. A championship rally will be held today to celebrate the Pittsburgh River Hounds Soccer Club's first ever title as the champions of the United Soccer League, which was won by them at One Oak Field in Tulsa, Oklahoma on November 22nd, 2025 by defeating Tulsa FC 5 to 3 in a penalty shootout after a 0 to 0 tie occurred when the game ended. From around 10:30 a.m. until 2 p.m. this afternoon, Grant Street and downtown Pittsburgh will be closed between Fourth Avenue and Forbes Avenue for the celebration.
It's a Houndstown, Noah.
And yes, the pun was actually necessary. And a high stakes hearing in the New York murder case against Luigi Mangione is continuing a year to the day after prosecutors say he gunned down United Healthcare CEO Brian Thompson. Mangione has pleaded not guilty to both state and federal charges. Before any trials get scheduled, his lawyers are trying to preclude the eventual jurors from hearing about his alleged statements to law enforcement officers and items allegedly seized from his backpack. The day's long hearing applies to the state case. It's giving the public an extensive preview of some testimony, video, 911 audio and other records.
Here's the Beaver County Forecast.
We'll see sunny skies and gusty winds this afternoon as a cold front moves into the region. We'll see highs today of 30 and overnight lows around nine and sunshine expected tomorrow. Look for highs of 33 and lows of 21. I'm Lisa Marie with your Beaver County weather.
On this Thursday, December the 4th of 2025, at 33 minutes after 9, we've got a temperature of 31 degrees. And according to the National Weather Service, there's some light snow out there currently in Beaver County. That's a look at the news for now. I'm Noah Haswell on 99.3 FM, AM 1230 WBVP, 95.7 FM and 1460 AM WMBI. Also streaming live around the world at BeaverCountyRadio.com.
Thank you, Noah. We are with Ask the Commissioners. We got a phone call right now. Hello, you're on the air with the Commissioners.
Yes, good morning, Scott.
Hey, Georgie.
Yeah, good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Morning.
I have a question to ask you, gentlemen. I go through the valley, Ambridge and all the way up into Beaver Falls and that. I see a lot of improvements, Ambridge, New Brighton, Beaver Falls, other areas that I drive to. My big question is, it used to be the hub of Beaver County, which was Rochester. And we have a lot of deplorable buildings there. We have one place that really, really advanced in their remodeling and stuff was the old hotel there, which is gorgeous. It's absolutely gorgeous. What authority do you gentlemen have to have something, some way of getting these buildings destroyed? Maybe improving.
We do have a, we have a blight program that's in place. It uses community development block grants for demolitions as well as Act 57 funds. We put that together with our Planning and Redevelopment Authority and the Community Development Group. I know there are several towns and River Town specifically that are using that, that funding. There's more blight than we have funds. There's more blight than we have funds. People have to apply for it. The hardest part with a lot of those blight removal is finding the owner, getting the owner to agree, having cleared title, and that's up to the municipality. We can't take anything down unless the title of that building is in the hands of the municipality. So.
Are these, are these property owners, are they notified frequently? Have you filed them?
Yes, a lot of them.
I'm a little concerned about some of these buildings down here. They're really, they're deplorable buildings.
Municipalities come to us all the time.
Go ahead, sir. I'm sorry.
No, I was gonna say municipalities come to us all the time when they have, especially when it looks like it's in imminent failure. And they've come to us from all over different municipalities and we've tried to take care of those and get them down so that they're not a public hazard. But a lot of these properties are absentee landlords. They don't even live in the county or the state anymore and it's tough. There's a big demolition that's happening in Ambridge right now with the old.
Duke City.
Duke City that's taken down. That's one that we.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, we just, yeah, we just paid, paid for out of the blight fund.
That's been used in a lot of TV shows. They've actually used that building to portray downtown Atlanta and another place. Well.
Yeah, so that's coming down. I think as we speak, actually, they're in the process.
Since you're working on the budget, how much money you have in this fleet fund you're saying you have?
Uh, I don't know. The blight, the blight fund, it's about a half a million dollars. I'll estimate it somewhere around that. But, but you know, I can only take care of so many buildings. I mean, something like, I think the cost of the, the juke.
The Duke City was about $140,000 and.
The owner's paying half of that.
The owner's paying half of that. The rest is coming through the block grant.
Right.
Okay, does the federal government come in and helps put some of this money?
Well, the community development block grants is HUD funds. So that is federal, federal money. But keep in mind that that seems to be dwindling every year. We've already had about a 30% cut in some HUD funding. So it only takes us so far, but, but the municipalities have to come forward. And the thing when we go to tear something down is we want to know what it's going to be used for and how it's going to help redevelop the downtown. So that's, that's the key, having a plan. Just tearing down buildings doesn't accomplish much unless you have a plan for redevelopment of those spots. In Ambridge, they do for that, that Duke City.
The town farthers, they should see that there should be some kind of growth in redeveloping, you know?
Yeah, Rochester's been a challenge.
Because I, I look at the buildings I go by there. I stop at the one restaurant down there and have maybe a lunch or something or dinner. And I just, I remember what Rochester used to look like as I grew up. I'm 77 years old. I can remember how that place was the hub at one time in Rochester, beautiful town. I just can't believe that we're letting it go down to the drink.
Well, parts of it still are. Dan, I mean, that's where Dan grew up, so he can relate, I'm sure.
Okay, well, thank you for your time. I appreciate the answers.
Thanks for calling. Appreciate it, Georgie.
You're welcome.
Another phone call as well, if you guys ready for it. Hey, you're on the Beaver County Radio Morning Show.
Good morning, gentlemen, and Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Uh, I have a question. A while back, few months ago, a year or so ago, there was an investigative reporter came down because he'd got reports about the housing authority misusing money going on junkets and whatnot. And at that time, Commissioner Manning was on and he said that they were going to look into it. They thought a lot of that money was coming from the entities that had invited him to go to the conferences or whatever. And then after that, the radio station got a letter from somebody over there saying that the situation had not been resolved. So I just, I didn't want to bring up something unpleasant this close to the holidays, but it kind of went quiet and there nothing about it. So I'll just hang up and, and listen to your answer.
Uh, I have not had any contact or any issues with the housing authorities since that report came out. My, my criticism wasn't necessarily of the housing authority. It was questioning the board's policy on attending those events. But that wasn't under our purview. We have no oversight of that or the board. And then there was an internal housing development authority issue with the funders of that, which is the federal government. So that's.
And apparently they had no issue with it.
Nothing ever came of it, so.
Okay, appreciate that update.
Yeah, that's kind of where we are.
Thanks for your call. The line's still open. Got some great calls so far. We got time for a few more. 724-843-1888. It is Ask the Commissioners, our monthly appearance from the Beaver County Commissioners, giving us updates on county matters. So we did reach the end of the year. Are you looking ahead to 2026? Are there any long-term projects? Are there any, you know, major developments that you guys are either geared up for, excited about, or, you know, what's, changes could we see coming to Beaver County?
Well, Dan's been more involved with this. I'll let him speak on it, but our tourism, our Parks and Recreation, our Tourism Bureau, so have done a great job. I mean, we've, we've done so many great events this past year, and I know we have a lot more that we're looking at for next year. I mean, there's just a, Beaver County's on the map for a whole lot of great things, not just boom, but Maple Sare coming up and different.
All we have to do in the next boom is keep our chairman safe from harm.
He's always in front of the stage. He's like, he's like the bodyguard.
He got hurt the last time.
I fell, I fell on the roof with the, with the SWAT team.
My question is, what is he doing on the roof?
I wanted to see all the great Beaver County residents and everyone else.
He was actually bleeding.
Yeah, yeah, so.
But I mean, it's good news that we're still.
Hands on.
Our tourism, our hotel tax revenue has, has been pretty steady, which is a good sign, positive sign for Beaver County and our expenses and stuff. Which, and obviously that is what fuels tourism. We've expanded the dog show, for instance, different things. We've got the Rabbit Raccoon Race, the Hundred Mile Race, different weekend events that are coming up. Our parks are still as popular as ever. There's still some renovations we'd like to do. I know the, I get, still get complaints about the bathrooms at Brush Creek. We've got, we've got some, some issues we still need to, to work on and a couple of other projects. I don't want to get too far out in front of it. But we're doing a lot, giving back to community, trying to make the quality of life in Beaver County the best it can be. And try to do events that every segment of our society can take advantage of and take advantage of the beauty and the assets that we have here in Beaver County. So we're doing a lot, a lot of work with Parks, Recreation, Tourism. I'm looking forward to next year and the different events we can do. And especially with it being the 250th anniversary, we have some really neat, unique historical events and different things.
And no money, no money comes from tax dollars. It's all from hotel tax. I remember a young township supervisor who proposed building the first hotel in Center Township. And we had our residents come into the meeting, the next meeting, who the hell's going to stay in Center Township in a hotel? Well, we have nine hotels now in Center Township. And.
Last two weekends, that's not enough.
Some of them grown, you know, we have them in Ambridge now and Chippewa.
I think it was like 26 total establishments.
It's incredible. It's incredible. Nobody wants to visit their family and stay at the house. They want to make their visit. No, I'm serious. Because I asked. They want to visit their family, but then he wants a quiet time. They want to go home, go to a room.
Heck, yeah.
With their own family and rest and relax. And then the next morning, they go back and visit their family again. The old days, we'd go crash the house and stay there the whole time.
Now, do you have to market anything about Beaver County? Are there like websites and are there, because I'm sure you have competition as well.
Visit Beaver County is the website. We do some advertising. We do advertising in the Turnpike magazines and those kinds of things up and down at the, the rest stops. And some other commercials every once in a while on different stuff. But, and we're also, I mean, we can't do any of these things on our, on our own. Push Beaver County has been terrific with some of the things that they've done, you know, and DJ Frye and different people that have come to help support these things. We're, we're not doing it all with govern, with county resources or tourism resources, Department of Three People, you know, but, but. So we have great community support and different folks, people like Brenda Applegate and the Historical Societies and groups, Getting of Gage and these 250 anniversary things. You've got Liberty Bell stuff happening and different things. So it's going to be an exciting year, I think, 2026 for, for different activities, outdoor recreation as well. And continue to exploit the, the assets that we have and hope the weather is great and have big turnouts for some of these events.
Yeah, Tony, Tony Caltori does a great job and his team. I mean, they're in great.
Visiting Beaver County.
Yeah, they're, they're engaged, they're involved. I'm very, very proud of them.
I know he's been on here.
And Beaver County is a great place to live. I say that everywhere I go.
I'd be remiss if I didn't ask about the sale of hospitals. Are there any updates or do you expect any updates?
I don't know. Dan, have you heard anything?
No, I haven't heard anything, you know, at the signing of, of the letter of intent or I don't know.
It's gonna take a year, isn't it?
Yeah, there's a lot of diligence.
Four to 12 months.
Has to go to the Attorney General's office and.
I would think it's going to be closer to four. Then I, I can't imagine that would take a whole year, but especially with the plight of rural hospitals and different hospitals in the Commonwealth. I can't imagine that being held up for any, any specific reason, but.
They made a commitment that they're going to continue to do the stuff that they're allowed to do on the back end so that whenever the day comes that they could officially sign the papers, it'll just be a smooth transition for all the individuals who, you know, are.
Employees, patients.
Employees, patients, vendors, whoever it may be. So, you know, we look forward to that. And we, we know that a lot of these larger hospitals are still good community partners, just like any other large corporation, so.
And we have great doctors here. Don't let anybody kid you. I mean, I had so many surgeries, I'm good for another 30,000 miles. So now, depending on what your problem is, whether you go to Swickley or whether you go to Beaver Valley, we have great doctors.
And I want to ask about Shell too, anything in there? Do you guys, as far as like monitoring them, because every once in a while a story will come out, they, they were fined or something. Is that more of the state level or does the county ever get? Are you all in that conversation at all?
All state. We, we have no, no purview, no oversight.
We're just closest to the public, that's all.
And it's been kind of quiet. Actually, all I do is see the Shell people at different events, community events, wrapping toys, doing toy drives and clothing drives and supporting different events. So that, that's my, most of my interaction with, with the Shell folks through chamber events and different things. They've been, I think, pretty good community members after they've lined out their operations there.
Well, I gotta say, I was at the Beaver Valley Mall a couple of weeks ago and it was, there was a good crowd. I mean, at least in Boskov's and Dick's Sporting Goods, that area of, I mean, it's Christmas season, but finding a parking space, it kind of made me feel like the way I used to feel, you know, maybe 20 years ago or so. I don't know.
They need to fix the.
When there's only so many stores you could shop at that are still brick and mortar, it's going to be busy. You know, as you said, I've.
Plus, there's going to be development around the mall.
And that's what, I think that's what, you know, one of the things that might, might change and might spur those owners to open their eyes and say, hey, let's, let's unload this or let's do something with it.
Yeah, potential's there.
Yeah, hopefully Neymar, the mall, they've done this with other malls up and down the East Coast and in the Northeast here, converted into more housing mall, food court kind of combinations. And for the most part, our senior center continues to be crowded every, every, every day. They do a great job at the senior center there. Career Link, job training for Beaver County in there. There's a lot of folks there.
And Pickleball now. We have the Pickleball.
As far as I know, that's going pretty well. And Royal King's still doing pretty well. Boskov's still doing pretty well. The Anchor Stores with the exception of JCPenney's.
U-Haul's doing very well.
But, um, yeah, but, but the interior, let's face it, that's, that's interior store retail in those malls is, is a challenge. And.
It was big in the seventies. It's.
To our benefit, a lot of that's now drifting back to our main streets, right? Our River Towns. So they're getting, they're getting that foot traffic that used to go to the mall and get that foot traffic. So there is some benefit to us, the fact that, that those stores aren't being successful in the mall. It's because they're, they're shopping in Beaver and Beaver Falls and Ambridge and Manaca and different places, so.
The roaring seventies. It was good to be in the seventies. Be, it was good to be 20 in the seventies. Sure beats being 70 into 20.
It's good to be 20 anywhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, one more quick break, maybe 20 seconds. No, it's longer than that, but we'll be right back. A little bit more with Ask the Commissioners.
Need a new job? Apply at McDonald's. You could work anywhere from three hours up to eight hour shifts. Whatever you choose, get premium pay for premium hours like opening or closing shifts. They offer insurance, 401K and more. Apply now at mchire.com. I'm loving it.
Hungry? Then get to Hangry Mike's. Yes, Hangry Mike's, the Rochester restaurant where every meal is crafted from scratch, sourced from local partners, and made with pride. The new menu treats meat lovers to a slow-cooked and smoked lineup with brisket, pulled pork, smoked turkey, whole chickens, pork ribs, and sausage. There's also the Cowabunga, a flank steak with creamy mac and cheese, peppercorn bacon, and barbecue moonshine piled on a mancini roll. Located at 200 Brighton Avenue, adjacent to Rochester Hotel, Hangry Mike's is decked out for the Christmas season. Join Beaver County Radio at Hangry Mike's December 13th for photo ops with Santa and horses from the Hidden Hill Horse Farm.
Patriot Home Care is now hiring caregivers. Are you a caring and compassionate individual looking for a reliable income with benefits? Then call Patriot Home Care today. Benefits include health insurance, life insurance, paid vacation after one year, and one and a half times hourly pay for overtime plus holiday hours. Patriot Home Care employees provide personal care, conversation and companionship, medication reminders, light housekeeping and laundry, meal preparation and airings. Start your career in home care today and call Patriot Home Care at 724-506-8911 or apply online at patriothomecare.org.
Remember way back when you were young and the bus ride to and from school set the tone for what made your day special? School buses and vans have had a special place in the Frye family for three generations. At Frye Transportation, the student transportation industry is embraced as a tradition, privilege, and lifestyle. From the morning laughs on the way to school to the talk about the day on the way home, memories you won't forget, just like the vintage football games aired each week on Beaver County Radio. Frye Transportation, caring for your children as they care for their own.
Put freedom in your future. Freedom United Federal Credit Union in Rochester.
Coming at you from the Frye Transportation Studios, 9:51 on this Thursday. Thanks for spending time with us at Beaver County Radio and Ask the Commissioners. So it is Christmas time, so. So let's go on a fun note here. If you had a chance to ask Santa for something, what's your wish list for the county? If Santa was able to grant wishes to county government, what'd you want?
Oh, jeez.
Another 50 years?
Well, that's not bad. You might need a genie for that one.
That's, that's dangerous as a politician.
Busy time of year. We were, we were talking off camera about you have like three events at the same time Friday and.
Yeah, I've got, I've got two events tonight, actually, that I'm going to. And I got four on Friday and two on Saturday, different stuff. Yeah, Santa could grant me to clone myself. That might be.
Everybody knows. All you gotta do is watch us on Facebook. We're traveling, we're on the road constantly.
Yeah, yeah.
All three of us. And of course, the, the baseball commissioner was tied up with baseball for.
Baseball, basketball, a little bit of everything.
You've eaten a lot of banquet food, I would assume.
Oh, God, yes. Dan's at that age where the kids are, you know, they can eat everywhere, every night.
But I earned, I learned to eat less when I do that.
Ah.
Because if I don't, you know, I turn into Pop and Fresh.
That's not true.
I haven't mastered that yet. I'm, I'm still up from Thanksgiving, so.
Well, I'm still on record. I want Beaver County to have a big New Year's Eve event one year, so we don't have to drive to Pittsburgh.
We've been talking about it.
New Year's Beeve. We even have the name of it, New Year's Beeve, so.
It's so cold. It's too cold.
I know, I know. But people go to Pittsburgh for that.
Yeah, it is cold.
Yeah.
Um, I, I will say this, Scott, I certainly wish everybody out there listening, I, I appreciate the opportunity to come on here every month and get to talk to, talk to our residents, talk to people. It's a privilege to be able to do that, honor to be able to be on here with my colleagues. And I, I just wish everybody a great peaceful holiday season and a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and look forward to January 2026 and starting us all over again for, for, for another year.
We appreciate you coming in and then being accessible, taking phone calls. You know what people are going to ask about. And I'm sure there are a lot of other counties in the states that would not, not do something like that.
We're doing this a long time.
But the other thing, based on everything we've talked about, relatives to other counties, and you can't say, you know, it's not necessarily a fair, fair comparison, but Beaver County is really in great shape. If you look around at what's happening surrounding us, I, I think we're doing a very, very good job in maintaining the quality of life and ensuring the public health, safety, and economic well-being of every resident of Beaver County. And I think we're doing it pretty well. And we don't have near the number of issues that some of our surrounding counties have. And a lot of that has to do with our residents and, and the government and our municipalities and our different agencies and the road officers and everything else. So I'm, I'm proud of what we've accomplished. I look forward to an even better 2026 and, you know, here we are.
And added to what Jack said, a healthy, healthy new year for everyone. There's a lot of people out there that need health.
That's true. And this is great for you.
Wish everyone a happy holidays, happy, healthy and safe holidays, you know. Hold your families close, you know, we see, we see what the world is like every day. And, you know, we're lucky in Beaver County that, you know, we have our first responders, our, our, our public safety, our, our mental health, you know, all these individuals who are going through tough times this year, you know, they're there to support them. So God bless them and, and, you know, happy holidays.
And, and just in closing, we've, the three of us have been very.